Citizens comments.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Right.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
No other citizens comments? Holy Cross up to seven oh five, everybody's here.
Oh yeah.
It's not a public game, so yeah.
Yep. Jimmy?
Yes.
Come on up.
Hello, buddy?
Hi. Mark Freeman. Hi, Fudge.
How are you?
Hi, Jamie, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, right, the parking at the contemplative center is sparse, and that was my plan. And then, everybody knows the backstory to this, VHB went out one day for inspection and happened to notice people parking all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
We have concerns about signing an as-built plan to certify that if the parking will be a problem.
No, I think, as I mentioned to you in an email I sent out, you communicated with me, that that was a, she got it with the chaplain's office and other administrators, and that was a fluke. Typically, as we, I read the minutes, I wasn't at the, in the initial meeting where this was discussed, but there's a, ongoing plan in place to shuttle people from campus to the contemplative center. That day, for some whatever reason, one of our departments went off the reservation, if you will, and they did not shuttle people in. And so, it was a mistake, we took corrective action, we sent out the announcements, and I think since then, it's been implemented across the board. So hopefully, that won't be a problem again, and we're working hard to make sure that it's not. I mean, I had multiple communications with the chaplain's office, the department at issue here, who won't protect the innocent, or the guilty, if you will. But, and they apologized, they said what happened, people commuted to the contemplative center, then went home, and they didn't use the shuttles. And that was a one-time incident, and we're gonna work hard to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
I wasn't here for, that was before my time, I think, that goes here, it's involved, and the parking was all set up.
Right.
Yes. Are there other?
I mean, in any event, there is not much parking, I mean, that was by design, I think.
Yeah, twenty-two spaces, if we could ever take, I don't know.
Not easy.
Not easy.
You know, that was one of the questions during the site plan review.
Yeah.
You know, so many buildings are there, so many rooms are there.
Right.
The chapel is a big one.
Yeah.
We did, each and every member of the board, you know, they did ask that, why are you having a small number of parkings?
Mm-hmm.
So that time, you know, they said, you know.
They said that's.
Whatever, whatever things, you know.
Yeah.
It's going to be, we're busing people, we would, nothing will happen, you know.
Yeah, I think that's the plan, and that is, I think that was a fluke, if you will, and we'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Okay, so, any other concerns, Vinny?
Well, that's a concern, but how do we ensure that it doesn't happen again? I guess the question, do we go to town council and get a response from town council on this one?
Um, no, the next step was our steps. I do, I do have, I do have an email, there was an email between.
There was an email, if I remember correctly, and our town council said it better to call the Holy Cross.
Yes.
Yeah, to have them come in.
Talk to them.
I was sure there were recommendations.
That's what she said.
They had no recommendation except reach out to Holy Cross.
Is there a way, since it happened, is there a way to get a listing of when you're gonna have conferences, when you're gonna have activity up there? So that if there's a board member that can take a swing by and just make sure that the parking is the way that it should be?
I don't know if that, I mean, I don't know, I can discuss it by individual, I don't know if that's how you'd normally operate with private property owners, that asks them for their friends.
No, private property owners usually provide this parking that is adequate for the property that they're using. And when they came in, when Holy Cross folks came in, Jim Burgoyne, I think it was, came in, he said, I promise this is what we're gonna have, this is exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna have this whole system set up, and it's gonna work fine. The board took him at his word and believed it, and then the one time we had one inspection go out there, it turns out that it wasn't being followed.
Yeah, but as I said, that.
But, hold on, as far as I'm concerned, I can, we had one inspection, and it wasn't being followed. How do we verify that it's going to be followed in the future? That's what I'd like to know.
All I can do is give you my word, that there's a policy in place to shuttle individuals from campus to the contemplative center, so that it doesn't happen again. I can't give you more than that, other than my word, that I've had the conversations with individuals, and I've been reassured that that was, to say, you can believe me, though, just a coincidence that it happened on that day. That that was the one-time violation, that we admitted that it was a fault, we didn't shuttle, people didn't take the shuttles that they were supposed to, they'd been told otherwise. It was a, and we put corrective measures in place to make sure that it won't happen again.
I guess the other question would be, do you wanna take this opportunity to put in more parking? And we could, I mean, whatever, just be easier on the permits.
Site plan review, you can do an amended application, which is less fees, less everything all around.
Can I ask, just as a newbie, do we okay fewer parking spots than they would normally?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's like a forty or fifty room place.
It's either a third or a quarter of the parking.
Yeah, I've got a, I forgot how many room.
Sixty, sixty rooms plus a meeting.
Right, I mean.
Plus the cafeteria.
That's why it came up, is because it didn't make any sense.
And so, if you choose not to add more parking at this point, I think, I mean, you said the communication's been out, does go out in writing, telling people? Is there, is there a policy that is in writing from Holy Cross?
And I could, I could show you the communications, I don't have it with me, but I can share with the chair and the communication that went out, and I can share with you. I mean, it's important to us, because we're, the events that take place at the contemplative center are campus-sponsored events, so they're coming from our community. So it's a matter of both an issue of parking, but also convenience for our, for our guests that they be shuttled from our campus. And so, I think this was just a department meeting that, for some reason, they didn't do that, the individuals did not take the shuttle. But we, I personally have made sure that this one particular department knows that that will never happen again.
Okay, if you could, if you could send me.
I'll send you, I'll tell, I'll send you, I'll send you, with the, with the, the chaplain's office sent it out, because they're, they run the contemplative center. But I'll reassure you what, I'll show you what sent out, what's sent out. And I just can't apologize enough about this one day, but, and I know how it was a disruption in the neighborhood. You know, we're proud to be a presence in that neighborhood, and we know that it's, we want it here and be good neighbors, absolutely, we want to be good neighbors. And it's important to us to be good neighbors, and this was just, it was a mistake, and I was very frustrated that it happened, and a lot of people were very frustrated. And we guarantee you that, you know, we'll do everything we can to make sure it doesn't happen again.
You're not on a big street.
That's the trick, yeah, like having that many cars coming in and out of that spot right there.
Lead, lead street, especially.
Yeah.
Not only that, and there is so much parking, if there is a fire or anything, you know.
Yeah, no, no.
Our concern was the safety aspect, too, if the, if the driveway's too clogged up, and there was something going on in the fire truck.
Yeah, no, no, we obviously recognize that, it's safety for our, members of our community, members of the neighborhood, and also the fire officials who would be responding to any particular incident. So, I mean, I, you're preaching to the choir, if you wanna call it that, in terms of how the importance of this. I've, I've had communications up and down about it, on telephone, email, and such, and there, we'll do our best, and actually, I can do my best to guarantee that it won't happen again. I think in terms of the parking, I, I'm not, I can't comment now on additional spaces, that's not a decision for me to make. But I'm here just to, you know, apologize again for what happened.
Is there a condition on the site plan review?
Well, there was, the, the conditions were that it was approved based on a promise that it wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna get abused. So far, we've had one instance where it's been abused. I'd like to hear some, not that you're gonna come up with it right now, but I'd like to have something in writing saying, this is what the policy was, it didn't work, or wasn't listened to, or something happened, this is how it's been changed.
Yeah, this is what's been.
And then, what has been done to make it improved? And what might be things that you would offer to improve the situation besides believing in promise?
Well, I think I've just explained pretty clearly that the policy in place works when it's implemented, and that one occasion, we admit that it wasn't, it didn't, wasn't implemented. So there's a policy that's in place that has worked ninety-nine percent of the time, this one incident, it did not work, we apologize that it did not work, people did not follow it. But we put measures in place to instruct folks to the importance of following it, we provide the shuttles, we provide the services to shuttle people from campus to the contemplative center. And so, I don't know which more I can provide than that, other than, you know, that's all I can say. I'm happy to show you documentation of the policy and what were communications we've put out to folks. But the policy hasn't changed, because the policy works, and in this one instance, it wasn't implemented. But the policy itself, shuttling people from campus, it works quite well, actually. We've got the vans, we've got, I can share with you the number of vans we have, we've got the transportation to do it.
No, that's, that's not the issue, it's, it's the idea that we got the promise initially, and the one time we actually had someone go out there to look at just the site stuff, wasn't even really checking on the parking, that's what they ran into. So how do we know it didn't happen any other time?
I don't know either, there's no way to know.
That's why, that's what I'd like to be able to know.
There's no way for me to, I said what I have to say, I think, about this, but I'll provide you the policy, then I should show you when we're done. I can't, I don't go to the contemplative center myself on a daily basis, when, you know, they have, I can give you the number of events that's, you know, has taken place there the course of this year. You know, there are forty-two retreats, overnight retreats, thirty, twenty-eight department meetings, social only day retreats, and thirty-four evening programs. So for, that's from August until July, so basically, it was a year. That's the small amount of time and place the center is used, which is not much, or most of the time, it's baking.
Some times it's overnight.
So.
Yeah, for forty-two, forty-two, forty-two overnight retreats. Eighty-eight nights total, thirty, twenty-eight day retreats, and thirty-four evening programs, typically forty eight P.M.
When your departments and your, you know, people make reservations for the space, is it, are they told right at that time?
Yeah, because, yeah, that's a very good question, thank you for it, because they're told, because this is a service provided to them, that we want them, not an optional service, this is what we'll do, we're shuttling you from campus to and from the retreat center.
So it might be helpful to see a copy of what, that language that they're getting as well.
And since they're not on Route twelve, for example, it's not easy simply to drive by.
Sure.
If Walmart had the same problem, it would be easy to see.
Yeah.
But you're out of, you're out of the way, and it's not on a street where you can see the parking.
But it's important to us to get it right for the neighborhood, we've hosted the neighbors on, at the retreat center for a social, for reception, we're gonna do that again, because it's important for us to be good neighbors, good neighbor. I just tell you this, it happened this one incident, and we're trying, and we're doing, putting corrective measures in place to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Do you wanna, I don't know, just send out a document, a letter that says, yes, this happened once, we understand you're trying to, you're putting in place measures to make it not happen. If it happens again, we would like to investigate adding parking, you know, or something like that, if we, if we notice this recurring.
After they submit, whatever they submit, that might be the thing to do.
I mean, just like, just put it in writing so that if, you know, that's the consequence, you know, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, we're gonna wanna investigate more parking. I mean, just so that we're not, we're not just sort of.
Other than this event, is the parking sufficient for the use you've had?
I asked the chaplain, and she said it's worked very well, because we've shuttled people in.
Yeah.
And so, I think it's worked quite well.
But there's staff, and there's, you know, all that, and the buses.
Catering, you know, that's, yeah.
Well, it's a small dining, it's a kitchen, so we don't, we have a dining service person who works on-site, so.
Right, well, that's what they talked about, I remember, they said, all that's gonna be brought in at the time, it's not like you're gonna have a full staff or something like that.
Yeah, exactly, right, so.
Okay, send me what you have.
I will, I'll do that, I'll do that, and if you're mine, next week, because I'll get it to you next week.
Any other questions?
So good about, you know, again, recurring events, we'll revisit this, or, so it stays on the table.
My concern is, you know, you have lots of land over there, so if they park it, if there isn't fire, fire, then, you know, the fire trucks won't get through it.
Share that concern.
And then, and then, you know, the, the center is full.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sure.
Disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah, I will share that concern.
I'm sure, you know, you don't want that to happen.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
So it's not like the, the board is giving you a hard time, but it is a real concern, right?
I, 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 I hear you, and we agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And also, the one other thing is, you know, we are not going to go, the town has no way of going there, inspecting whenever we have any event, we are not going to policing on you. So it's for your own safety, you know, it's better to.
Absolutely, thank you.
I appreciate you coming in.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Actually, our clerk just mentioned, we haven't, have we gotten, I don't think we've gotten an as-built plan of the whole site? We're supposed to get a certification and an as-built, I don't know if you can take that back and talk to whomever.
I will, I've just got my old chief of facilities, you need an as-built plan?
They gave us an as-built of like the building and the structural stuff, and the roofing materials, and that's not, we're looking for the site plan.
Okay.
That like, all the site got built the way it was supposed to be, there was some talk, and I think, I think the septic system ended up going in the wrong, or in the place that it wasn't originally designed to go. Because there were some issues with that, and we never got a revised plan, so what we have, if we go to our.
We got something too detailed, you want the as-built site plan.
We got eighty sheets of plans, we're looking for like two or three sheets.
As-built site plan, okay.
As-built site plan.
And a certification from the engineer.
And a certification from.
I think whoever your contractor was, gave you a certification.
Yes.
We just need a certification that everything, all the utilities were installed according to the site plan.
I will communicate that, and we'll get that to you with the chair.
Yeah, send it to me, or you can, or you can send it to the planning board, because it's on the website, where our address is, either one.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate the time.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing on finder's pod, anybody else have any on finder's pod?
We never got any response.
Never any kind of response.
No status of as-built.
Once they get, once they get the.
The license, yeah.
Once they get the license, then also, I told.
Paul, you did send them an email, didn't you?
I did.
That's, that's a problem.
Are they open?
I don't think so.
I was talking to Nancy today, they don't have.
Oh, they don't have the license yet.
She isn't releasing it until.
Not until they comply with us, so.
So that's good.
Well, that's sort of an incentive, but is it, sort of?
Yes.
We were jumping right to as-built, oh, so they're not starting a new permit, they're just trying to complete the old permit?
Complete, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, as long as they did what they proposed to do, then well.
Yes, the parking expenses and all that.
She said, everything was done, and her engineer said that they had it, and she said she would just submit it, but that was, I think, November or December.
Two months ago, yeah.
Do you wanna send her another one?
Well, I mean, no, if she's not getting a permit, I figure that's really gonna be what she wants.
And if she knows why she's not getting the permit?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, she does, yeah, Nancy, yes, she does.
Okay, all right, maybe they're not ready to open yet.
Right, right, and maybe there's some issues that they realized that it wasn't actually built.
Yeah, because it sounded when she was here, that they were gonna open quickly, but maybe, who knows?
But we talked about the parking, and she said, oh, the parking's not the way it's shown on the plan, it's.
Right, it's this way, the cars are this way or this way.
And it's not paved, and so there, I think there are bigger issues.
Yeah, okay, village center zoning update.
Well, I've been trying to compile all the comments that I've received.
I know that's probably taking a lot of your time.
So that should be done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did have.
We redlined that last time a little bit.
Well, we went through part of it.
Nothing, I haven't seen anything, but what I did was, I went through the document and kind of summarized the things that we were looking for. We're trying to make it match the current zoning, and last meeting, we got through like the first couple of pages. If you look at the next couple of pages, there's a lot of the standards that are in there for signs, and for the business, I mean, for the building. We've already got most of that stuff in our current bylaws, so that what I've been doing is kind of hacking through and deleting a lot of it out.
Professionally hacking.
Yes.
I had, I had a few comments, did we get as far as the bottom of page three last week?
There should be asterisks where I ended.
Well, this is an older copy, the one that I made comments on.
Okay.
So this may not totally match up with what you have.
Sorry, where are you, what section?
Dimensional requirements. Still dimensional requirements?
Now, that was before we got, okay, dimensional requirements, what do you want?
Um, the second item on this sheet was setbacks for residential uses, there shall be no front side or rear setback requirements, and we talked about that at the, at the public forums.
Oh, right, that.
And.
That's right.
Did you strike that from the later version?
I struck that, and what I think I did was, I had ten feet all around, or ten feet front, side, and rear, is that, but in the other areas, in general residence and single residence, it's twenty-five front, and then ten and ten. Would the board wanna stick with the ten all around, or twenty-five, ten and ten, so that kind of matches the rest of the town? I don't know that it's gonna create any problems, but if, on a small lot, if you have to push the thing back, and then we also require in this, it talks about parking in the rear.
Yeah.
And I changed that wording to be, when there's three or more, or more, I think it was more than three parking spaces, that's when we wanted to have parking in the rear. But if you've got a single residence there, and you wanna put a couple of houses there, I'm sorry, a couple of cars there in the front yard, it's your driveway, that's fine, so I said anything more than three.
Okay.
You wanna move ease parking in the setback for the, for the front, so they could park there?
Well, if it's a residential unit, I said up to three would be allowed there.
Okay, but, okay.
Right.
Wait, we don't have the rule that you can't park in the setback in residential?
Correct, it's not a parking lot, a lot is considered to be, like, more than a certain number, if it was five.
Okay.
Town roads in this district would be designed for low-speed travel, and therefore, would be encouraged to be built narrower than normal town standards.
Yeah, well, I don't know that we'd be doing any roads.
Run one forty, well.
Twelve and one forty, yeah.
I mean, that's often low speed.
Well, that's, I, I think I struck that whole one out, because we have the existing roads, I can't see any new roads being constructed in this area.
No, but one forty might be widened.
They can widen it or something like that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, that's, that was a goal, or, you know.
Actually, can we go back to setbacks?
Yes.
Do you wanna change front setback to be less, so that if they want it to be pedestrian, you could have the building up in the front right on the curb, and on the curb, right on the sidewalk, you know?
With no frontage, or ten foot?
No, about ten foot, so it's not, it doesn't have to be way back, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're ten, because if you're a business, but if you're a business, and we want you to park everywhere, you want, I mean, your lot's kind of small, we want you to park in the back.
Yeah.
But we also make you go twenty-five feet back, right, like, like, I mean, are we kind of just shooting ourselves in the foot there?
Right, so the building is like six feet long, six feet wide.
Right, 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 right.
All right, well, I have it written as ten feet all around right now.
I think that makes sense.
I mean, we're, it's gonna go, this is definitely not the final version.
Sure.
I like that for the front, then, just to promote, or let them move the building forward.
That's why we did it in the business, so that, that's good.
That's, that's all I had, Vinny.
I waited three months for that? Thank you, no, thank you very much.
Yeah, see, see what you get next time, jeez.
I know, that's it, a lot of luck, all right.
You're right, though, that's, yeah, yeah.
All right, so, and then I will send out another draft.
Compared to what the other board members set you.
Right.
You're much more concise now.
See, you know, I'm much, I'm much better in person, on the fly, you know, talk about it right here, you'll always get something from me if we just do it right here.
Yeah, that's true.
That's right.
And I will have it ready, you know, the guy from CMRPC wanted to know what the status was, and so what I'll do is, I'll go through and finish this up.
Okay.
Send it off to him, and how many things do we have on our next agenda?
Right now, shrine.
So maybe we can put that on the agenda for next time.
For the village center?
Is shrine next time?
Yeah.
First meeting in April?
Right, April tenth or something. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Something's going on that day.
Were we waiting for them to get us something, some charts or some layouts?
Shrine.
No, village zoning.
Oh, CMR.
We were looking for a zoning map, or the map of the area.
Didn't they, didn't they send us those?
I couldn't find a map when I was going through, I'm, I'm pretty sure they did.
I think they did, but then we wanted something different.
We were looking for the zoning violations, and how to, what the standards were to get compliance with zoning.
They sent us.
Because I think they sent that as of November or December.
Oh, really, okay.
You're saying they did send those out?
Most reason, I think so.
Okay, so if we think we got everything, that's good, I just didn't know if they were on the hook, too.
I believe we got all the maps that we asked for. I don't have them with me.
Who is our person there now, like, everybody's changed?
Eli.
Eli, only Eli.
Dave, what?
Okay, I did go to the Holy Cross on Saturday, and I gave Vinny a copy of the topic of village zoning.
Oh.
Village centers on the.
Oh, it was good, good training. A lot of that stuff that you guys were just talking about, it seems like that on some of these towns and municipalities, their village zoning is like, the building is like right on the sidewalk.
That was, that was what was mentioned at the meetings, that they used examples of Hudson, Mass, and that's a downtown that's been in existence for a hundred something years, and the buildings are right on the sidewalk, and that's not what we are intending.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, that seems to be, you know, what that's all about, is that's what, right on top of the sidewalk.
Well, I believe that the town does not want that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we heard at the hearings that people came to, at least that's what I heard. And I think what we're trying to do is not the state standard village zoning, or village center zoning, it's more, we got a whole lot of houses. And right now, we got a lot of old houses there, a hundred and something years old that are there, so we want people to be able to utilize and not have two little old folks living in there, because they can't sell a house that they think is worth four hundred thousand dollars, because nobody wants to have that big house, and they're stuck with it.
Right.
So we want to be able to make it workable, and something that is, is helpful to the community.
We don't wanna lose the old houses.
No, I understand, I understand, I understand, but it was a good, it was a good training, they brought up a lot of good points, one of the things that they did try to focus form base code, was I didn't understand too much.
Form based.
But I did use some of that, I did make a copy.
Yeah, we got it, it's, it's like a performance zone, it's a, you don't say a ten foot, you just say it's gotta be what you're kind of, the look that you're looking for.
And if you want an example, Lowell and Somerville use the form base code, and so does in the Cape Cod Commission, all three of those use the form base code.
Someone's proposal would be judged on an individual basis, rather than using a set rules.
Interesting, those are such different towns.
I'm pretty sure that the Cape Cod Commission is probably pretty strict, because the Cape Cod, anything on the other side of the bridges is like very, very specific.
You bet.
That's true.
But the unique thing was, is that they did bring up Lowell and Somerville, so, and Somerville's, you know.
Somerville.
Yeah, so, I mean, it might be something that would get.
Yeah, lots of old houses.
I'm sure Vinny probably knows a little bit more about it than I do, but.
I don't know any of that stuff.
I find that hard to believe, but.
Should I know that in the minutes, Vinny does not know?
No idea.
Thank you, thank you.
What are they doing in Littleton? Curious.
And Rush seconded.
Tough crowd.
Okay, all right.
Apparently, Littleton thinks that form base codes.
So you have a hard copy of that?
Yeah, I made a copy for Vinny, because he asked specifically for that.
A better option to explore.
I hopefully, that'll, I'm sure he's gonna review it and take all the comments, I'm sure he's gonna implement, you know, see if all that's gonna apply.
Okay.
Like I said, it was very good.
Oh, I'll try, yeah.
All right, good.
It'll be something to talk about at our next meeting.
Yes. Speaking of things that always come back like a bad penny, we have the site plan review spreadsheet.
I don't think it really went anywhere, I haven't done anything on it.
Nice segue.
Did everybody else take an in-depth look at this?
I'm still trying to avoid my piece there.
So I don't, I do, I mean, I guess I mostly don't know what to say about it, like, it seems.
I understand, it's, right, right.
Okay, right, like, it seems like there's work to be done.
You are working on that.
It's more of a coordination.
Right.
It's been many months.
Because it's stuff that's been.
It's well organized.
It's there, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five sites, you know.
Yeah.
It's there.
Well, a bunch of sites, yes.
That's right.
Well, we probably need to meet with the building inspector at some point.
And he's, he said he's happy to come in to meet with us.
Okay, when, when, when should we schedule that, do you think? Want to come to a meeting?
When's our public hearing in April tenth?
Yeah, for that.
Is that at seven? So I don't wanna keep them late.
Seven fifteen, I forget which one we.
Oh, seven oh five, or something like that. Well, why don't we just put them on at the end of April, the second meeting in April?
Second meeting.
See if he can, yeah, yeah.
And maybe you'll even have some of those checked off. He may, maybe.
The first meeting or second meeting?
Invite him to the second meeting in April?
The first meeting or second meeting?
First meeting is shrine, seven fifteen, so you wanna ask him to go to the second meeting?
The second meeting.
That sounds good.
And we can, do you wanna approach him with it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Say, this is kind of where we're at, and if you have questions, come back and talk.
Does he, does he have a copy of this?
I don't, no, not that, this is just us.
He doesn't, okay, should I send him a copy? He doesn't, okay, should I send him a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Email it and ask if we could attend that meeting, I'll just double check with Cheryl.
Okay, okay, so you're gonna send a message to him, or should I?
I can share, it should go from the chair.
I can send him a message and I can send him a copy of this.
That's a nice formal invitation.
Come on in, come on in for discussion, okay.
Yeah, he seems to really wanna do that, so that, it would be good.
Good, okay.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, site plan review application for Shrewsbury Street, RJF.
We've seen that before.
This one here just the accepting it, it's got the.
What's that?
This one just to accept.
Yeah.
Hi, yeah, I'm Patrick McCarty, I'm in the town.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Nice.
Yeah.
This is my chair, ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you guys wanna switch.
You wanna bring one more up?
He's not in for this one yet.
Oh, is he?
He's here for the next one.
Oh, man.
Oh, sorry, stay back.
Sorry, stay back. Did you really say that? Yeah, sorry, alright. So, does the board wanna look at this first, or you wanna just?
Wait, no, not that, it's the second one.
No, 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 yeah, this is, they, we're just.
This is to accept the special permit.
And we're gonna schedule the hearing, right?
Yes, that one.
This, oh, okay.
Yes.
Oh, alright, sorry.
No drawings yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we're not really reviewing.
Matter of fact, I kinda left it in the mailbox.
We're not doing it, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't deliver them?
No delivery, but in the mailbox, and I still found it there today when I came in, so.
So this is, so this is for.
I gave it back, right, I put it.
Corner lot.
Yes, corner lot.
Right.
Is, uh, the, is the other house down?
Yeah, I don't know which address.
Oh, I thought I saw it said empty lot or something, you know, you, existing use on the form, but I, I didn't drive by to see.
Brian filled it out, so I'm gonna have to beat him tomorrow when I get back to the office.
Now, this is, um, the two lots or?
Oh, the corner lots?
The corner lot.
It's three, it's actually three lots?
Old lots, is it?
No.
Or two lots?
No, it's just the ones.
Twenty-nine dot one and twenty-nine.
So it's like the house and the garage or something like that?
Yeah, the house and the garage, exactly.
Yes, another one.
Okay. Are you gonna put them together into one lot and?
Well, yeah, it's just over an acre when we put them together.
It's just what we need, right, what's our requirement there, is that's business, one acre?
Yeah, one acre, one fifty.
Yeah.
So you are combining two lots into one?
And what's gonna be the final lot address, so that when we do this, we get an address, one eleven, one thirteen? Cause I had someone say, oh, it's one eleven to one thirteen, so one twelve is on the other side of the street, how can this be part of it?
I think it's one eleven.
Oh.
Cause one eleven's between, to, between.
Well, they're probably just gonna be one address, right?
Keep the corner, yeah. One eleven in the corner.
One eleven, yeah.
Oh, you pick it, if, if you like that number, so we'll use file it all as one eleven.
Yeah.
Exactly.
One one.
It's kinda scary.
Sorry.
Okay, did you, did you take a look at this?
I did a quick look at it.
Sure.
My only thought, and it's kind of up to you, is that you didn't check off that you need a stormwater permit on the Form S.
Okay.
I think you do, but I didn't look at, I didn't see any plans, I didn't go to the office and look at the plans. But your first page, you've checked off site plan review, special permit application, and then the stormwater permit, which I think you're already doing drainage gels and all the stuff that would be associated with it.
Yeah, they're all there, yeah.
It's just that if you're altering, altering ten thousand square feet, square feet or more, then you need that.
Well, yeah, yeah, so that should've been checked.
So you need to check it, so when we do the advertisement, we have to say that it's also for site, for, uh, stormwater bylaw. Well, when we.
Yeah.
When it's in there, cause it says what it's going for, right, site plan review and special permit, and I think it's.
Doesn't mention stormwater.
It's a special permit.
Oh, no, cause I didn't, never put it in.
Right, cause it wasn't checked, so, now I just need to.
Probably revise that and send it over, though, I'm, I'm sure.
You can, or, I mean, you can.
Can I check it and initial it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I believe we're gonna do it, I just wanna make sure that when you do your notice.
Right now?
Yeah, I didn't include that when I made up a hearing notice.
Oh, okay.
Your hearing notice has to be amended, we can give that, but amended so it includes the stormwater aspect.
Okay. Okay.
And that's, and then you're all covered, but I don't wanna go down this road, have it all finished up, and then we look at the end and say, oh, yeah, you're over ten thousand square feet. You need to hold a public hearing for the site plan review for just the stormwater portion.
So we're covered as long as it's in the advertisement?
In the notice, yeah.
And, I mean, yeah.
And on the permit, but I mean, that's, that's our papers.
He's checking it off and initially, that's fine, and we know that.
So I, on this one, I'm gonna check it and initial it.
Cause we, and then we'll draft the approval when we get to that point, based on that.
And then, do you want me to fix that and then just send it to you?
It's up to you.
To, to, um, I've sent it to all three of us.
All three?
Me, Brian, and Justin, now, I.
Me, myself, and I.
How is this project related to the other projects that are, you know, in the same place, that are all your projects? Are you ever gonna put them all together?
No, that, so, but, we're actually in the process of, um, Kevin Jarvis went out and did a whole perimeter survey of the self-storage, baseball facility, the LFR lot, this corner lot, the Pierce lot.
So you call, the LFR lot is the, kind of the one that goes around?
The LFR one is the one we just broke ground on, yeah, for the building in the back, and then the back property, cause it's all a bunch of little lots on there.
Yeah. Right.
So we're trying to do an, an A and R plan that we'll bring back to the board and have it as few lots as possible.
One server.
There's a couple that we're gonna get stuck with no matter what, because the way the railroad is, is a section of it is all the railroad, and then there's a five-foot strip that's owned by Rob, a strip owned by the railroad, another five-foot strip owned by, or no, the other way around. So it's Rob, a five-foot strip by the railroad, Rob, a five-foot strip by the railroad, and then Rob on the other side of the tracks. Don't ask me how it, it ever came to be that way.
Tax bills are interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're in the process of doing this whole master perimeter survey so we can mark up an A and R plan and have any more conforming lots.
Put it all together. But, like, this one that you're doing now isn't gonna share a driveway or is gonna share a driveway with the LFR?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll just, we'll, we'll deal with it all when it rolls through.
And this one, we're, you're gonna give us a, an actual stamped survey, not like on the last one where you asked for a waiver for that. We're really gonna, we're gonna get some, cause this is the one that kinda ties it all together, cause once we do this, there's no wiggle room, this is the last lot that fits into the puzzle.
So, it, it is a, Kevin went out and did a updated topo of the whole thing and the perimeter, and that's what we use to do these design plans, but he's still in the process of finalizing this stamped survey. So on this one, I think we asked for that same waiver.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna rent that one, I, we wanna see it all figured out and worked out, cause I don't wanna get stuck.
Will it be done before we finish the?
What are we gonna get stuck on, though?
The only, I mean, we've kinda let it ride with the other ones, cause we knew there was more space, or if there was something that didn't quite work out. We, we usually, I mean, we need a survey to know what's out there in actuality in the field. What's gonna, if you get someone out there already doing this work, why wouldn't you have that?
It is, it, it is, so Jarvis Land Survey went out and did a, an existing condition survey of these two lots.
Okay.
To, in order for us to design the plans.
Okay, so what is it that you're requesting a waiver for?
I just don't have, I don't have that plan in his title block with a stamp on it. I could certainly have him put in a title block that says existing conditions plan and stamp it, it's not gonna change anything that's on the drives.
Yeah, no, I don't think we, I thought our bylaw, and then we can check it, I thought at the bylaw was that it just had to be a surveyed, uh, stamped plan, so that he can stamp that plan that's already in the set if he's done the survey work and he's okay with stamping it.
Right. Yeah.
So that's all I'm looking for, I don't need, I don't need a separate plan, I just need to know that whatever the existing conditions that you're going by on this is the stamped, uh, actual real stuff. Survey documentation, cause like you say, your property lines are all over the place.
But now you're kinda bounded, now you're, now you've got the train and the road.
Not for this. Not for this project.
Well, no, but for all the other ones, and that, that was where the wiggle room was, so you don't, you shouldn't have that problem on this one. But I wanna make sure that your surveyor said, okay, we do really own up to this area here, because if you don't, then you've got a substandard lot and then you have to go for other stuff.
Oh, no, no, yeah, we know that, we know that what we own already.
Yeah.
The, what we're doing is the survey in order to take all these little old lots and put them into conforming lots, but we know the perimeter, we know it's Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury and Hartwell Street.
The train, we had a donut purchase.
Yeah, you're stuck with that, right?
Yeah, we know that.
Right, so I guess that's, I'm not, I'm not sure what waiver you're, I didn't really look at the waivers that well, but in the last one, it said that there was not a surveyed document for the, the property.
No, they were.
You do have that.
No, I, I think, I honestly think that was a misunderstanding, because when we did the site plans for the seventeen thousand square foot building in the LFR building, that was based, when, when Kevin went out to do the ASBIL for the self-storage facility, he started all the way at the right and topoed all the way across, so we had a new survey to do those site plans.
Then why wouldn't your, I guess, why wouldn't your surveyor stamp the plan if he?
There's a difference between stamping it as an existing conditions plan and a, and a boundary plan. The boundary plan requires a boundary survey, more calculations. Existing conditions plan, it shows the right away, the, the right of way and the lot lines from plans of record, monumentation that's found in the field and it's, you know, it's fit.
Right, it's got a little bit more leeway to it, but.
Yeah, it, we're not talking feet, we're talking tents.
Yes, and that's, and that's why I'm thinking that, why would you need a waiver if you've got basically everything that you need?
I think it's just a matter of putting Kevin's stamp on the drawing and then the waiver request goes away.
Okay.
And as long as he, well, that's what I mean, is he's able to do it, cause he's already done it, before he hadn't done the.
No, he had done it before, we submitted the last site plans too, yeah.
Okay, well then.
So I think maybe it was just a misunderstanding.
Okay, I thought it was still kind of flexible.
Between what I was saying and the hearing.
Probably my hearing.
So, no problem, Mike can talk to Kevin about that.
Can you put it on the record?
Sure.
You have a hearing problem.
Yeah, too, yes.
So there was one wrong and now hearing? Really going off the rails tonight?
I think that was every, that was, so.
So, what, what, do we agree on a date that you guys wanna?
Oh, yeah, we have to, it's.
We didn't do really what you gave in for.
May eighth at seven o'clock.
How much time do you want, is that good?
Well, we have to do thirty days for departments to respond, which brings us, not quite.
Oh, I just didn't know how much time, do you need more time than that, or is that, okay.
No, the plans and counts are all done and submitted, the only, um, the only thing that's in process is the security plan. We, we tweaked the floor plan a little bit and gave it to Rob's security consultant, um, but that's only ever gonna be a broad brush, kind of big picture security plan. I think we talked about this before, that in all the ones I've permitted, you never submit the actual security plan, because once it's submitted to the board, then it's public record, and anybody can go and make a public record request and say, hey, can I have that security plan for?
Okay.
The, the dispensary?
Yeah, we haven't had that, but that makes sense.
That's good, that does make sense, yeah.
Yeah, so what the ones I've done in, in Fitchburg and Harvard and Lemonster is, you, you submit a narrative that outlines what the CCC regulations are, and then usually the police chief.
That you conform, yeah.
Comes in and says, yeah, I'm gonna work this out specifically, and I'll have the personal knowledge on behalf of the town, and we'll keep it out of the public record.
And you get him to send a letter saying he's satisfied.
Saying this is, yeah. Huh? Why is it energy, I mean, is it JH Energy?
Just another entity name.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So, May eighth?
I'm just gonna let you guys know that there's a distinct possibility I will not be here that day, because it's commencement week at WPI.
Skip it.
So the night is our graduate commencement, I have to stand up on stage and give out like five hundred.
Oh, you do it?
I stand behind the president, I'm on TV, you can stream, you can watch me streaming there, you know, I'll be up there, I get to pretend to be a PhD, cause I have to, what you, if you're on the stage, you have to wear the whole outfit and everything, you know, it's, it's, yeah, it's extremely exciting. But at any rate, there's a, there are distinct possibilities of my needing to work late that week, so I.
So do you wanna do the following meeting, so that you?
Do we need to have, I was gonna say, I just, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't.
It's a special permit, so we need four out of five.
Okay, that, that was why I was telling, that's why I was telling you guys that.
As long as nobody else gets sick without a chance.
Well, that's, we're.
That means you all have to show up.
Well, I went to the Holy Cross thing, and, and one of the issues is we can tell that to you, so if you're worried about having a full board to vote.
Right.
Now, that, just the opportunity may not be there if, if she misses it.
Do you allow tape, to watch the tape?
You can do it for one meeting, so if she misses that meeting and she catches up on the one meeting, she can, but.
Have we enacted that, I think we've enacted it in.
I thought it was a state law.
I think the town has to accept it, but I think we might have, I don't.
I think we did, uh, well, I don't know, we can check on that too, but, what's it called, the heiress?
You just took the class.
Potentially, I mean, we always do these first, right, so, like.
Right, if anything, you come in at seven and.
I come in and I, and have to, yeah, exactly.
As long as they're not too long.
I just wanted to, just to put it out, if you wanna make sure the whole board is, can vote.
Well, I'm suspicious of taking a wild.
So if anybody here is not gonna vote for it, make sure that person is the one absent.
Yeah.
Well, that's the strategy, that's why we figure it out.
I think we stick with the eighth, though.
Yeah, the latest, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, our next item is the Fletcher Tilton letter regarding.
Seven o'clock, um.
No, seven oh five or whatever, or.
Yeah, seven oh five or whatever the.
Yeah, seven ten.
We don't have a new election.
We get, we allow five minutes for citizens' comments.
Yeah, we'll discuss the comments later.
Oh, that's right, that's right, we said that before, we would just move that.
We can do that. Seven, elections, do we have elections in June?
June fourth.
So those are gonna be, we have one meeting in May, then if it goes to the next, second meeting, we're all set.
Who's that?[1534.14]
But we don't have any, is it, is anyone running? Is anyone running for planning board against you? So we don't really have to worry about losing one of the others.
Oh goodness, so it might be down to three, so if she misses a meeting, it doesn't make it out.
Well, no, I.
And he's gets elected out, most likely.
What's going on today? So you want to run against me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I want two seats, I wanna get two votes.
Okay, ready to continue?
More or less, as ready as we ever were.
Next one was.
Okay, so now that we're moving on to the second half of this thing?
Yeah, we have three people at this.
So good evening, members of the board, my name is Jess O'Leary, I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton, I'm actually a resident of West Wilson as well, we're up here. I, so I'm sort of standing in for Todd and, um, his associate or his partner Amanda, who had been in front of the ZBA. With respect to the letter that was sent in on March twenty second, so. This concerns, you know, a parcel of land near Hartwell Street, obviously you know that this concerns JH Energy, Rob's here on behalf of JH Energy. And the engineer on the site is also McCarty and Patrick's here to answer questions with respect to engineering, but. By way of sort of brief background, um, the lot, if the variance were eventually granted. Would be developed to include two buildings, the total square footage of which would exceed a hundred thousand square feet, currently the lot is vacant. So obviously the addition of a hundred thousand square feet of industrial, commercial use, um, building would significantly add to the. Town's tax revenue, um, just something to consider, and with respect to the letter that we sent in. So, we, we initially applied for a variance in January, went in front of the ZBA. The ZBA denied the variance by a three-two vote, I believe some of the members of this board are on the ZBA as well, so I'm sure you're familiar with, with, um. So that, that. That variance petition was denied, we subsequently changed the site plan and we resubmitted. A petition for variance, we then received a letter back from Chairman Olson. Telling us that we were to proceed through the repetitive petition procedures. Because the revised petition concerned the same parcel and essentially the same development. So that's why we're here tonight, to essentially seek this board's consent to a hearing by the ZBA on the revised petition. And my understanding is that the, the sort of burden that this board is faced with is determining whether enough information has been submitted to this board. Such that this board could find that. That information could lead the ZBA to make a determination that specific and material changes have been made to the project. And therefore a rehearing is, um, exact.
So like the, so the change you made is, is significant enough to, to change the outcome?
Essentially, but it is the ZBA that ultimately makes that decision.
Yeah.
This board just determines whether the information supplied to the board could lead the ZBA to make that.
You're essentially the gatekeeper.
Yes.
On letting us back to the ZBA.
Right, it's, it's one of these things, so you can't just keep submitting the application to the ZBA and keep on just beating them down.
So the statute says that we have to come here and the planning board has to vote to allow us to reapply.
Oh, sure, fine. It is, it actually requires, it requires four votes out of the five members to vote in favor of the.
All right, so are we ready to vote?
Um, I still haven't seen what the actual differences are. What is the specific material change?
So we, the original request, so we're, um, sixteen feet short, or fourteen feet short on frontage to have two conforming lots. We came before this board, uh, in December, I believe, and I showed you the concept site plan. That could be developed as an industrial park.
Right.
Under a special permit and, and we didn't hear any big, you know, angry no, this is never gonna happen from the board. I think everybody felt it was kind of reasonable and I think you understood. Why it's Rob's desire to have two separate and independent lots rather than the industrial park, which would lend itself more to a condo, a detached condo. Type of ownership where two people could conceivably own the buildings and they'd have to own the land together. And, um, we presented that to the zoning board and unfortunately. It didn't go as we had anticipated or hoped, I should say. Um, and so we've modified the, the frontage request from one lot to the other, moving it away from the railroad. Bed, so we've kind of made the.
So one, the one lot that was substandard now is the one that's standard and it just.
So now the, the wetland lot, they, they, in either case, you're gonna have a common driveway, right, because of wetlands?
We have a common driveway.
So now which, the wetland lot is now standard?
Well, yeah, it's not the, it's the watershed protection act is the.
Well, all right, but, but that's the lot that has the full frontage now?
Did the ZBA indicate to you that that type of change, they might approve that type of change?
No, we didn't, we didn't discuss the change to the plan, um.
And they didn't suggest, we would approve it if you did this, they didn't do any of that stuff?
No, it's not their position to do that, the process, they're trying to go, and they got denied, so they need to come back to the ZBA. To get back to the ZBA, they have to get.
Oh, no, no, I know, at their first meeting, did the ZBA show any, whatever?
Indication that this might be, yeah, yeah.
I was told that it got denied by other members of the concerns of the bridge. So I, I was a little bit concerned about why that would influence the members of the board to. To, to not allow a frontage variance, uh, the, the bridge is well, it's fifty, it's over fifty tons.
Was, was there a concern about the stability of the bridge or the capacity of the bridge?
Of the land, from what I was told.
I'm sorry?
A usage which doesn't concern, I mean, we don't know what the usage is because.
Yeah, but regardless of the variance, you could have the usage.
It's a whole nother meeting, it's a whole nother process.
I think that, um.
The land access, the frontage access seventeen acres, so when I purchased the property, I met with members of the town and they said that the variance, the frontage. Rules apply because they don't wanna have somebody, you know, saying, hey, this is a commercial lot, it's, it's small, you know, if the frontage is an issue. But when I met, and I know she's not here anymore with Anita, she said, because we're accessing seventeen acres. You know, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's not very productive to have one building on seventeen acres when you can. Use it for much more than that.
Did, did, all right, I mean, I, I don't think that should have anything.
The issue that I see is that it's a variance.
Yes.
Standard is very strict. Is it possible to do a subdivision by putting some kind of like a little cul-de-sac bulb on your frontage to gain that fourteen feet that you need?
Yeah, so some towns, um, actually have a reduced standard subdivision roadway bylaw. Just for that simple purpose, where you can essentially show a right of way and then the board waves down all the requirements. From a roadway to a driveway and that stays a private way for the simple purpose of creating frontage. Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't have that.
You don't have anything like that.
You've got an existing street out there and you only need fourteen feet, so if you have. If you have an existing road that's going down here and you've got however much, and you're trying to divide this up, you need fourteen feet between there. You just put a bulb area of the right of way in here, you propose it as a subdivision, you have to go through the subdivision process, but. The drainage changes are not that big, you're making this the subdivision, you're subdividing and making this into a right of way. That could create frontage. Because it's a longer route around a corner.
That's tricky.
So that you don't have to worry about doing a variance. I mean, I've seen it done, I actually did it once twenty something years ago, back in Milford, so. But I guess.
Yeah.
It's just drive, it's all just paper.
It's all on paper.
And the town within accept this or do whatever.
And it's, it's hard because I want, like, I wanna pour out the arguments on why we meet the standards for granting a variance, but that's not why we're here, I mean.
Well, did you, did you do that when you were there?
I thought we had and, and I'm honestly a little, I feel a little awkward because Raj is sitting across from me and he was part of that whole discussion and so. I don't wanna rehash.
No, we're with it.
Meaning that we had, because I don't think that's appropriate.
Change, there's substantial difference.
And, and your vote certainly doesn't, um, govern how the zoning board is gonna vote, we can go back there and they can say. Open the meeting, no again, goodbye.
These are, this is just the process.
This is just, this is just allowing us the opportunity to continue the discussion that.
Yes.
The only thing you're doing is moving the lot line?
Yeah, over.
I mean, so changing the lots.
Yeah.
We're changing, yeah, we're changing the lot.
When the earlier petition was, one is a conforming lot, we have the one hundred and fifteen frontage. The other one is hundred and thirty four, now they are switching it like this.
Which is, I mean, in, in, in an essence, that is a, is a change, I mean, that's, that's valid.
Hope it's something that costs money.
But it's not, I, I, it doesn't, it's not the change that solves the problem, it just, I mean, we can. Vote that it gives them another opportunity to go to the ZBA, but I don't think this is the. I don't thi, I think they're gonna want the same argument again, I mean, they're gonna talk to you about the same things, because it's really the same thing again.
Cause that's, I look at it, because I was hoping to see something in the letter saying, okay, and these are our specific. What is it, specific and material changes, and it wasn't, you didn't even put it into the cover letter.
It's hard, it's on a frontage variance, right?
Yeah.
It's not like we're asking for a side yard setback and we modified the design of the building to conform to that side yard setback. There's really nothing I can do on a frontage by moving that dividing line. One way or the other, to either have a variance on this side of the line or that side of the line.
Except for his cul-de-sac or curly.
I totally agree with that, but that's where I'm having a problem saying that's a specific and substantial change, I mean. You don't have a lot of wiggle room, this is what you're proposing, it's basically the exact same thing you proposed the last time. So I don't know that it's a substantial change.
So, so I think I, I would, I would just add that, the, it's not just a flip-flopping of the sort of frontage layout of the two lots. I think that the way that it's changed better, um, accommodates the wetlands and some of the. So there, there are justifications that we will be providing to the ZBA to support why this isn't just a flip-flopping. And in fact, it does have to do with the unique topography of the, or the soil conditions of the land.
Well, tell us that, and then that, that'll be on.
Variance though, right?
No, but that's also what would give us the substantial change, make them, to give them the second bite of the.
I just, I guess I have trouble with it, just the idea, there, there isn't a lot of wiggle room on a frontage situation. And since there is very little, there's not a lot you can change, I mean, you can't. I mean, you can't really do anything, you're just stuck, you've got so much space and you can only cut it up into so many pieces. It seems like the exact same question going back to the ZBA. And I don't know that that is a material change, I mean, it is a change because. The portion of the frontage.
Right.
Is now being extended over here and reduced there, but it's still the same idea, you're.
We're just doing exactly, because to be honest with you, I came here the next day after that meeting because I missed that meeting. And I asked, I said, what, what else could we possibly have done, and they explained the situation, they said that the frustration was over the bridge and the usage. And I said, well, and I explained to them the situation with the bridge, the research that I had on the bridge, and I explained to them that it wasn't a usage meeting, I don't, we don't. The land's not sold, we don't know what we're doing with it yet, and they said, well, just go back in front of the board then, change it around and come back to zoning. So this is just a step in that process.
Can I ask you whom you asked?
What's that?
Whom you talk, whom, what, is this a some board?
Three or, I talked to, I mean, I talked to Chris, I talked to George, I've talked to three or four people and they all said that this is just the process. They said that there was questions about the bridge and accessing the land, there was questions about the usage. Somebody said that we weren't honest about the usage and I didn't know that there was a question on the usage. Nobody knows what it's gonna be, this, it's, it's zoned for the grow facilities, there's people looking at it for that, we've got people looking at it for. Large contractor bays, there's several people looking at it, but with seventeen acres to only use one building on seventeen acres didn't. It's just not feasible, it's not, the town's not maximizing the usage of the land and, and the potential taxing revenue, I'm not utilizing. I mean, it's seventeen acres, it's, it's a huge chunk of land to only have one. One, one building on.
And I mean, I, I agree, and that's absolutely true.
When I went through all that stuff, the questions that came up were the usage and the bridge.
Right, and that really isn't what matters, but the thing is, but the way to approach it, I don't see is to go for variance. The approach is to subdivide the property.
You can't, it's, it's.
The only way we could do it through subdivision control law, we couldn't do it through A and R.
And I don't agree with you, but I don't wanna own anything.
Another discussion that was had at the zoning board process, you can't through an A and R create a non-conforming lot without ruining the one that is conforming.
Right.
Through infectious invalidity.
All right, I just said we can't do it. Right, but it is a subdivision thing, and, I mean, that's what a lot of people, people own a property that's like newer circle or westland circle that came in here. They own eleven acres, they did a road that came in that created the frontage to create the lots, that's the whole basis of the zoning act. You create frontage if you wanna create lots, or you have enough frontage for the lots that you have. And the situations where I see a variance is, is when someone buys it unknowingly. Or there's no, there's some factual consistency or some condition on the property where. The rules shouldn't apply, and this is a big property, it, it's been broken up this way for however long it's been. Uh, purchased by the railroad company and the DCR, so that frontage has been there and the frontage hasn't changed, so.
No, it has changed, when the, when a portion, the rear portion was subdivided and, um. Sold, for lack of a better word, to DCR for watershed protection. Somebody didn't have the foresight to leave enough frontage for two, for two conforming lots.
Right, but that was a couple of property owners ago, right?
One property owner ago.
And you came in with that.
Yeah, that's, that's been the situation from the get-go, and they also said because of the railroad, because we don't land on both sides of the railroad. That we could use the continuation. Because there's an easement for the railroad, so that there was a question when I purchased the land, I probably should have looked more into it, but they said that. With the easement, with the railroad easement owning property on both sides of that easement, we could possibly take frontage from the other lot.
Yeah, but it's not, it's screwy, it's partially simple, partially easement.
So that's.
Right, there's five feet, two feet, five feet, two feet.
It, it certainly, you know, starts to check the boxes of irregular shape and topography and then there's no substantial detriment to the public good. Because I think everybody around this table has said, yeah, you could do that exact same plan under a special permit for industrial parks, when you drive up in your car. One versus the other is not gonna look any different. Which goes to your point of the messing with the right of way line.
Yeah, still almost the same from the car.
I mean, the, what are, there's the benefits of public good, there's the, you can't do, or. What is, what is the detriment to your project, the, the three things you're supposed to prove for a variance?
Regular shape and topography.
Yeah.
Hardship and, um, substantial deterioration from the ordinance slash, uh, public, you know, detriment to the public.
I mean, that, that must, those are the points that the ZBA opposes.
Yeah.
No, I, I mean, they can't, because none of that can be used, there can't be the bridge, I mean, that's not part of that.
Right, some towns have a huge variance clause where that would.
So why, why we are discussing ZBA things?
Yeah, but it's not, it's not.
I think, you know, we should look at the planning board issues, the ZBA issues, you know, the ZBA looked at it, they made the decision. Based on number of reasons.
But it was those, those three reasons had to be the reasons?
I, I was one of the member, I'm not going to discuss the ZBA things.
I'm not asking.
So, but you gotta, anyway.
I don't think, I don't think we need to go into the standards, the three standards that the ZBA has to look at, what we have to look at is, do you believe that. Changing from the long side to the short side and the short side to the long side is a specific. And material change from the first variance application, I guess that's, that's the question that we have to decide.
Right.
It certainly is specific, I don't think it's.
I don't think it's material, right, I, I don't think it changes the argument, either, that's my, I have a hard time with this, it just feels like you're gonna. I don't know if I could in good conscience send this back to the ZBA, because I feel like they've already decided on this. And they're gonna look at it and say, well, you just, you just, it's like a sleight of hand, you just push one.
Are you changing your?
We wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if the zoning board didn't, if the members of the zoning didn't tell me to do this, I wouldn't waste my time, I wouldn't waste my money.
I would also just add that.
What is that, what's the hands up in the air?
I, I don't understand, because I've talked to Chris and he's never mentioned anything that this gentleman just said, that he said what to do.
He could.
You just don't understand.
I would believe Chris would give him direction as to what he needs to do under the law if he wants to appeal it. He's not encouraging that it happened, no, I don't think he's encouraging them to do it this way, but that's, he's explaining the law of the process.
Right, which is facts, I mean, that this is true, obviously you're following the process, yeah. Everybody has a right to try to take a second chance, right?
But also just add again before the board takes a vote that, you know, the, the, the specific material change applies to the project. Not necessarily the, the ZBA's likelihood of, you know, rendering a different decision. And, you know, the purpose, as you sort of noted when, when the meeting started, was that, the purpose is essentially that so that the ZBA doesn't. See identical applications coming in all the time, so if there is a material change to the project. Um, in this case, a change to the sort of apportionment of the lots, which does have some effect on the location of the, um. The, the wetlands within lot two and lot one, um, then I would argue that that is a material change that at least warrants. A review by the ZBA of the revised petition, and if they wanna raise some of these concerns that, that we're discussing, I think, you know, they're obviously entitled to do that.
Does this change your, the, the, what's the first, the first rule is, or the thing to prove is?
I think it better, I think it better accommodates the specific topography of the land with respect to the presence of the wetlands.
So it changes that argument enough that, that's, that's the argument that's gonna change?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I just look at what you wrote and what we're looking at is. Uh, the planning board to make a determination that the second variance application represent, represents, contains. Or I guess contains specific and material changes from the applicant's first variance application, it's the second paragraph in his letter. The last line, um. I don't know, that's where I, I guess I'm, I still don't see it.
So the actual, and I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but the actual document that was provided to us by Chairman Olson. Is the Department of Housing and Community Development Guidelines with respect to the zoning act, and it has a section on repetitive procedures. One of the things it says is, is it, is it, so this board just has to find that the change could lead. To a finding that there has been a material change, so this board doesn't actually even have to find that there's been a material change. It just has to find that the information submitted could lead the ZBA to make a finding that there's been a material change. And that's, that's in, under C three of the, of the, so it's, it's fairly nuanced, but.
What do we have before us that would make us think that?
Right.
The same, I mean, the same thing that we've just been discussing, the change, the change in the, the parameters of the two lots. And the way that that change better accommodates the natural structures and, um, wetlands that are on those lots.
And I'm looking at this layout, is it just this little, this last line, the border between the two lots goes straight out and then kinks at the end, is that the? That kink is the change?
Pretty much.
And then?
Yeah, a little bit different geometry, but essentially that one line.
Yeah.
From, from the street to the ninety degree turn at the driveway is what's changed.
To the, yeah, but, but the, like, the wetlands is, is all here, or the, and then, so it's, it's. Moving just a little bit further away from the wetland.
Right, so it would provide better, you know, better ability to kind of remediate the wetlands area or provide a catch.
Is that, I mean, is there wetland, I, I don't know really what the wetland layout is, is, was, was the border kind of going through? Some small.
No, it, I have a bigger version here.
There you go.
The, the wetlands are, the wetlands are down here and then there's a stream.
On the other side.
Track, actually comes under the track and runs that, that establishes these, um, primary and secondary zones for the watershed protection act. So, we're trying to keep everything as far away from that as possible to, to comply with conservation. So, we're trying to keep everything as far away from that as possible to, to comply with conservation guidelines of DCR guidelines and everything that goes along with that. So we're, you know, we're up close to our setbacks as far as the side setbacks, just allowing, you know, minimal room for grading and stuff like that. So we're just trying to pull the entire development up, away from that.
Out of the, and was that a, a key part of your argument in the ZBA before? And this would improve that argument?
Yeah, I, I think that, I honestly feel that there, and, and, this is hard because I've got one member in front of me and one behind me, and I can feel the eyes on me, and it's, it's an awkward situation where you have members on both boards.
Because, you know, we cannot discuss.
I know, and I'm, I'm trying to answer questions without getting into those details.
Yeah.
I understand, you know, you can't mix the two, just like.
Why, well, I don't understand why we can't, under, why the planning board who's making a decision about whether this change is significant enough to, to send it back through the ZBA again, why can we not hear that argument?
What is the, what is the significant plan changes here?
Well. Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking you, what is the significant plan change?
I think you said it's a significant difference in the application, right?
You have to be different plan, Mark.
Is that what you just said?
In the project.
Well, in the, so I guess, I don't know, I mean, it, it's hard, it's just hard to, like, if I'm looking at the two applications, they're almost word for word the same except for that lot one and lot two are flip-flopped, and one, it was a hundred and fifty to a hundred and thirty-four feet, and now we're a hundred and fifty to a hundred and thirty-six feet. So there are two feet.
Yeah.
There are two feet that are different here. Um, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I, I, just, I'm trying to like, really see some major difference in the argument, or in the, in the, in the application, right? In the petition, and.
So the, so, and, and not to interrupt, but the, the, you know, the, the procedures allow you to take an interrogation, not just the written submissions, but what we're sending here today, so I would just ask that you not necessarily confine yourself to what's been written, if, if you think that it's insufficient, but what we're saying is add.
Right, and I guess my problem is, I, I don't apparently want to hear the argument you're gonna give to the ZBA, but I want to know if you feel you've changed your argument enough to go back to the ZBA and get a different decision.
Yeah, and I, I think that we're. You know, we're, we're not in the business of wasting our clients' money, and Rob's certainly not in the business of frivolously spending money. We, we feel that there's a valid and responsible argument for why a variance.
While you're trying to go back.
On this particular parcel of land, not any other parcel of land it was supposed to, on why there's a valid argument on how we meet the statute for granting a variance, and that's why we're here, asking the gatekeepers to allow us to have a second discussion. And we very mal, well, might lose again, but we're, we're, we want that opportunity to maybe give a better explanation to the zoning board, to give a further explanation, to add additional details that might sway. All we needed was one vote the other way, we needed four to one, we were three to two. So it's not like we were a five to nothing, get out of here vote, it was a marginal vote, and we feel that we, we could present additional and clear and concise data that might change the outcome of that vote.
We honestly don't think we need that much preparation for a sixteen-foot variance, we honestly played it like.
Right, well, now it's fourteen feet, I, I mean, I, I.
Seventeen acres.
There's, it's, I mean, it is a change, you know, maybe there's, I don't know, I guess I, I think. If you wanna have a second shot at it, do we feel like we're gonna get a second shot at it?
Well, I, I still just look at, what are we seeing, and I still see it just a swath.
Just, just, just to clarify, there's nothing that will actually get built that's any different.
Right, right, right.
So therefore, there's no change in what's being built, and the fact that the line is slightly different.
But no, but we're asking for a frontage variance, so that is what's different. It's not a build, it's not a building or a site plan or a use.
You're asking for.
And you don't wanna go for any suggestion about the subdivision, right?
Well, no, it's, that's later, it's not now.
But you know what?
Right.
That, we could make that decision, but you know, that's almost circumventing zoning in the same aspect, is you're saying, oh, well, Hartwell Street's fifty feet wide, but in front of my house, I'm gonna make it fifty to sixty-seven and back to fifty, just to circumvent the frontage.
Seventy.
That's true. That's true.
And I just wanted to have building, I mean, I, I wouldn't want a building that I don't own the land on.
I'm gonna put it in there.
That's the problem with the industrial park, and the way that the lots are broke up, one is three acres and one is fourteen acres. So who pays more? The guy with, they, they get the same, it's just confusing, I just wanted to have two.
Right, and, and that, that was the big discussion is, is, you know, I referenced, you know, Curtis Industries, eight million dollar investment, two hundred jobs into town, they, Cogmedics, six million dollar investment, two hundred jobs into town. If, if a company's coming here and wants to build a fifty thousand square foot building to land acquisition, site development, building construction, they're gonna spend ten million bucks. Do they wanna own their own land and be the master of their own castle, or do they wanna have to own that land in partnership with this guy? Who may be an absolute slob with junk everywhere, and, and then you're in this, it's, it's cleaner from that aspect, from the finding as, financing aspect, from title aspect, on and on and on and on and on, on why it makes sense to have two individual parcels over one, and I'm sorry, Roger, I'm trying really hard to bite my damn tongue, but sometimes I just get going. But, but I really feel that, that, that this particular lot, not any other lot in town, not any other lot in Worcester County for that matter, this particular lot is a good case for a frontage variance, and we're just asking for the opportunity to have a further discussion with the zoning board, and we could lose. So all, all your, all this board is granting is the opportunity for them, cause it said could make a change in their vote. Doesn't say they will make, so you're not influencing their vote or anything of that matter, you're just giving us the opportunity to have that one discussion.
Second discussion, that's what I, and that's, and that's my thing.
That's what you're asking for, the second discussion.
We, we did allow that the first time, cause we didn't write a letter that says all the, by law says you have to meet this, 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 and this. First time you went through, we thought it was a reasonable thing.
That's not, that would never be your role as a planning board though, to do that.
To make recommendations, sure it is.
Not on the gatekeeper.
Not, no.
No, not on this, not on this.
None of this doesn't mean frontage, the zoning board, I mean, the planning board doesn't determine.
No, but they always ask us for.
No, we, they ask for recommendations, so that would be recommendations, that because it doesn't, and it's whatever else, we come up with a response for that. And that's what happened last time.
But that would be a huge priority, or a zoning board would adjust.
Exactly, yes, right, and that, that all makes sense. But what you just asked for is for you to get a chance, and I think we did give you the chance, and then it got denied.
No, no, you didn't give us a chance, we had the right under the, under the statute to file that zoning application the first time.
Sure.
You had the right, and out the consent of the planning board, regardless of what your letter says, we, just as everybody else in the state of Massachusetts has the right to appeal a decision, or to file a variance as the zoning board appeals. So, yes, your letter that you sent in response wasn't negative, wasn't positive, it was, it was kind of middle of the road, and we thank you for that. Um, but it's on the second round that you're now the gatekeeper getting back before, not on the first round.
Right.
And I think that would, I would.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with everything you said, so that, that makes sense, I guess, I don't know. It's not my decision, but I don't know that there's enough change to warrant a change decision from the ZBA.
But that's not what.
That's not.
Well, that's what I, I would like to add, also.
That's what it said.
No, it says could they, right, they could, or they could not.
I would. I would also like to add what, what, uh, was said about the first time they went in, they didn't think it was, they, they only did a certain level of preparation, and now you're, you've been there, you, you've had trouble, you're going back, you, whatever, you've changed, you, you've doubled down your argument, you've finished your presentation, added to it.
Yep. Added to you to the other side.
I mean, for that amount of effort, I, I, I mean, I think that is, it's, e- e- even though the two feet or three feet of change to the, uh, frontage may not be that much in the scheme of a wetland border. But I think that they've also changed their whole preparation, they, you know, they've, I hope that they've changed their argument a little bit so that it's more in-depth, maybe more complete, fills out the three boxes, makes it, I mean, I'm, the, the, the news I got was that they didn't seem like they had answered the questions. I would like to give them, my vote would be to give them a second chance to go back before the ZBA, make a complete argument again, and hopefully they do it again. I don't know if I'll do it a third time, but I would vote for a second.
No.
Yeah, I agree.
And we fully understand that we can go back and, and be denied again. We, and we understand that whatever vote you take tonight has no bearing on the outcome of the zoning board meeting.
Yeah, right.
It's only the opportunity to get back to the zoning board.
I guess in my news to you is that I heard that the first presentation was thin, and people felt it was, okay. And so if you can.
Beef it up.
Beef that up, I think that that is, that would be a reason that I would give you the second vote.
And not hear the same thing that they heard last time.
But it was seventeen acres, fourteen feet, it's not like it was six acres, you know, I mean, we thought that was such a big land, it wouldn't be an issue.
So you are saying that, you know, seventeen acres, two lots.
Right.
But we have seen you coming for one subdivision, another subdivision, another subdivisions, and all, one, one, one of those lot, you, you developed one, first one, the storage places, then baseball, then this, then this.
Right. Yeah. Right.
So now you have a thirteen acre lot.
Mm-hmm.
What, what are, you will be building more buildings over there too, right?
No.
Uh, they're not my buildings.
The biggest difference.
Thirteen acres, you know, you could come back.
No.
No, we can't, we can't, Raj, we, no, because we, we can't, we cannot.
You could do an A and R.
No, respectfully, Raj, you can't, the, the biggest difference was that other parcel had all that frontage on Hartwell Street.
Right.
I mean, on Shrewsbury Street and down.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's a completely different animal, you know, imagine this was.
Yes.
Hartwell Street, and Shrewsbury Street, we had all that frontage to carve that up. This one is it, this is it, right here.
And we're under huge restrictions from the DCR on impervious, so we can't put any more building up.
We need a simple majority?
No.
No, we're a super majority.
A simple majority?
We need four for this.
And you're, we didn't ask first, we probably should have, since I work for the DCR, obviously you guys know that, but you're okay with me voting, or?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And the ZBA members can throw.
Yeah, this is one of those opportunities where you can get rid of the vote.
As long as it's not talking about the decision based on those three standards, if it was, then they would.
So technically, technically it doesn't need to be four to five, it needs to be all but one member of the ZBA. I don't know if someone would stand whether that means we need three out of four, or?
I don't, I think it, it's always based on the number of people on the board.
Total number, okay, so we would need four.
At least, that's the news I got at my last, whatever, training on that sort of stuff, makes sense.
Okay, do we have any more discussion?
Do you want a motion?
In the positive.
Yes, motion in the positive.
I'll make a motion, okay, a motion in the positive would be that we approve the application, or whatever this is, the application to go forward with another ZBA meeting? Or is it the ZBA?
Petition.
Petition, okay. Application for frontage variance, another opportunity to go before the ZBA with an application for frontage var- variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Um, I'm not sure, well, you're the lawyer, I, is that wording okay? I mean, I'm thinking we need to do the determination, our determination is that the second variance, that the variance application that was submitted contains specific and material changes from the applicant's first variance application.
Okay, revise your motion.
So I will amend.
Is that what you're looking, so just so we don't get.
Revise your motion.
I will amend to be, you want it to be that second, third sentence? Application second variation. The ZBA, uh, you know, to, to determination that the second variance application represents and contains specific and material changes from the applicant's first variance application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No, but still precarious.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck, Jenna.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, see you on the eighth.
I know your, I know your brother pretty well as well.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, that's from the venture.
Uh-oh, he says.
Your wife?
From the venture forum.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, good, good.
I didn't wanna pull that out before, though.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's good.
Jess, can you just make sure you sign in for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see ya.
Yeah, he voted no.
I said, I voted no. But they got four, so it's all right. Which I, that's great, I like that.
Well, certainly, you know.
That's, that was tough. Um, so, we have some correspondence, uh, western cir-, uh, western circle, and did anybody notice that the subject was, uh, spell corrected?
Oh, no.
Spell checked, didn't really.
It was spell checked.
I did not notice that, but now when I see it printed here.
That was the first, that was the first thing I saw, and I burst out laughing, just by myself.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was great, I sent an email back.
You did, oh, good.
That was nice.
Wasteland circle.
Wow, that's awesome. Wait, we'll tell you.
Um, do we, this is just for information, we have nothing that we're discussing on this.
Just that it's there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have no real discussion around any of this?
Well, I think what we wanna make sure we're getting is that, we wanna make sure that they're calling VHB out there when DHB needs to be there, cause I guess they got all this drainage stuff out there.
They put it under, underground.
Yeah.
They need to get back up?
Hmm, well, I don't know, it didn't, it wasn't really clear, it didn't sound like the inspector or VHB was all upset that they didn't get a chance to witness the installation, but it seemed like, let's improve the coordination here, so.
Yeah, like, give us the schedules, what I saw, where's the schedule?
There was lots of, lots of email back and forth on this.
Yes, yeah, and so we need to support whatever is.
Yes.
Doing, cause this is gonna be a town road that we want done right.
You bet. Uh, speaking of done right, uh, I've heard nothing from anybody about Newhouse Circle. I copied, uh, Jacqueline who sent the message out originally. So I sent that out and copied everybody, and I've heard nothing from anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the, that's the last item. And Wayne was, you know, volunteering his time for a fee to go out there and take a look.
When you said you didn't hear any, you meant from us or from anybody else that you contacted? Like Ali or?
The email, no, the, uh, property owners.
Mister, I didn't copy Mister Ali on that, or did I?
No.
Oh.
I don't think so, but.
I would not, I should probably send that to him.
Yeah, and just let him know there's a question, and that we'd like to get it corrected before he starts moving forward on the approval of the road.
Is he still?
Fifty-two degrees, what the hell is he doing?
It's cold.
I will forward that to him, that's, that's my mistake for not sending that to him.
I don't know if he's gonna do much though, cause he's kinda out of that project.
Yeah.
Oh, no, Newhouse Circle, no, he's still on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Still on it.
Right, cause he now wants us to, he's gonna have to go to town meeting for acceptance of the road, or else he's gonna be plowing and maintaining all that stuff.
It's gonna be a private road forever that he's gonna keep.
Right.
Okay. Well, yeah, I, I would get Ali, cause he's the one who's gonna deal, just like he did with water.
Right, right, and I mean, it's kind of, it's a difficult spot where the, there's drainage coming into the people's backyards. If it were the front yard, it'd be a different story coming off the road, but, um, it's one of those things, it should be done correctly.
Which side is the odd number?
The left side.
So the uphill side, okay.
But if it's impacting the drainage coming to the street and impacting it as it goes on.
Well, that's probably what's saving the people on the other side, is the street's filtering it all away.
Right.
Right, but it's one of, we gotta make sure it gets done right, cause we don't want a lot of water coming down into the street and having the street buckling and good heating, that's the word.
So what would they do, put, put like a, like a little, a French drain or something all the way down the back of the place?
They could do that, it depends on what it is, and it could be that when he did the work, he didn't compact the ground in the back of the houses, and it settled right up against the foundation, so when the water comes in, it just goes in, or he doesn't have gutters on the, the houses or something. I mean, there's all sorts of reasons for water in the basement, but no one likes it.
Right.
No, it's no fun.
Through the chair, can I ask you one unrelated question? So why, uh, Angel Brook on the hillside, those roads were not taken by the town?
As part of the cons, the, uh, CCRC?
Condoms, condominium.
No, continuing care retirement communities are by definition a condominium association or an association of owners, and they have certain rights and responsibilities, and when they designed the roads, they knew they weren't gonna get taken over by the town, so they weren't quite up to the standard of the town roads, it was still substantial. And that's why we went back and forth so many times with those two groups. But the standard wasn't as high as a town road standard, because we're not gonna accept it, um, and do all the maintenance in the future. So they are responsible for that in perpetuity, same way as Briarway.
So that means, that means that they, they have to pay the street lights too, everything is their one?
I think, once it comes, there's a, I think there's a meter at the street, at Shrewsbury Street or up at Hartwell Street, I think, once it comes, there's a, I think there's a meter at the street, at Shrewsbury Street or up at Hartwell Street, and then that's where they, they raid it.
And they're, and they are condominium is their own separate island.
Right, so there's common lands which have fees for the common lands, like the irregular maintenance fee and all the other stuff goes towards that, like electricity, the water for the irrigation of that, if they have that. So people pay taxes on their unit, as well as.
The common condo.
Common land tax.
So they preferred it that way, was it?
That's what, the way.
Commonly taxed, or?
So, well, that's why it was proposed that way, that was a benefit when we changed the bylaw to, to make that recommendation for CCRCs, was we wanted that to happen, so the town doesn't. One of the big costs of subdivisions, when we get housing developments, is maintenance of the roads, electricity.
Yeah, but they do pay the tax, right, for the town?
No, they don't pay the same amount of tax, no, well, they say they pay the same amount of tax based on their value.
Mm-hmm.
But that's the way it was set up, was that it saves the town some money by having it in that kind of situation.
So, just like, you know, either me or you or him paying a tax, right, we get the town benefit.
Yep. Of being right on the road, yes.
Road.
Yep.
But they are not, they are not.
Well, they get the town benefit of being on the road, they just have a, they get the rest of the road.
No, that, no, that road, you are, you are, it's a town road.
Do they, do they pay less tax because they're not on a town road?
Yeah. No, but they drive on the rest of the town roads, once they're on the two.
I'm not sure how, but there's a question, I don't know about the assessors, the assessor, the way that it gets assessed.
How they assess the values.
Because they're, they're only assessed what's their unit, and then they're assessed land, I think, for the common area, so it's not like they're assessing road fees or anything like that.
How was that other tax charged?
They have an additional unit fee or their condominium association fee, but the taxes are just the taxes on, uh.
So who pays the taxes on the property?
No, there's, there's taxes on the property, but it's not.
So they get two tax bills?
No, no, because the condominium association pays the tax.
Oh, okay.
But their condominium fee goes to that.
So goes through their condo fee, alright.
Goes a part of it.
So that's the reason they have their no solic- solicitation sign there?
They can do that, yep, they can keep it more private.
You cannot enter the property.
They can control it.
I think my name's on there.
No.
Especially.
Um, do they get trash?
N- no.
I don't know.
They pay their own trash.
They pay their own trash.
They do their own trash?
We do.
So I was asked, someone asked me, you know, why they are paying, why they're.
And that's, I mean, the same thing was happening on the ones next to you, I don't think they're supposed to have trash, I think they had their own trash.
They have their own dumpster.
Right, so they have their own trash pickup.
We do too.
Yeah, they, those smaller apartments.
Yeah, I think it was anything over four units was.
Yeah, they do have their own.
SWAT, you, SWAT does that stuff, solid waste advisory.
Yeah.
Team or something.
Because our road is not, is not town, we pay for everything ourselves.
Task force. SWAT. SWAT.
Okay, let's move along, report some other boards. I'll start and say none of my other boards have met.
Uh, Affordable Housing Trust met, we're sort of plugging away on trying to find other properties to, to build, um, the senior housing, there, there's more investigation. And there's a whole bunch of stuff going on in.
So can I ask you that one question?
Afro Terrace. Yeah.
Why you want a senior houses?
We love our seniors, and I'm gonna be a senior, and I wanna live cheap.
Yeah, but can they, senior will afford any building you build it?
That's the problem, that's what we're struggling to get to.
That's what they're trying to do.
Yeah.
Can you, can you build in affordable buildings for the seniors?
We can't build, I don't think it's gonna be possible for anybody to build.
Not like that, not like. Not, not like ninety-five, no, you know, nobody can afford to live there.
Right, even though there, some of them are called affordable.
Yeah.
Right, we're trying to do something different, I don't think we can get down to Orchard Knoll.
Yeah.
Like, we're, I don't think we're gonna have a place where people could move out of Orchard Knoll and into the new place at the same rents, I don't think we can do that. But we're gonna try to get it as cheap as we can, you know, which is, which is cheaper than.
No, the, the, the way, I, I, I don't know much about your affordable housing, the way I look at it, anyway, we are not building it, we are giving it to some developer. So the developer builds the building, and then, you know, he want to make some money, and then he is renting it, so by the time, you know, that's like the middle man, the rent is high.
Well, but it's.
And also the rent is going to be decided on the, our, uh, town, what it's called.
The taxes and all that kind of stuff?
Nah, uh, cost.
Oh, yeah, no, it's our cost of living or whatever.
Yeah, cost of living, no.
No, it's the average income or whatever.
The county, the county average.
No, uh.
Adjusted gross income?
No. We were talking on the CMR, we see that.
Yeah, but, but it's the average.
Mean income, mean.
It's the average income of people in the area.
Yeah, origin.
And it's some portion of that.
So that's high, that's why the, uh, rents are high.
Well, yeah, I mean, but, but as long as they're, what they're looking at, and they're trying to plan for affordable senior housing, then that keep working, if we can get something like that, that's great. But don't go down the road like you did with Maple and decide, oh, boy, these are gonna be.
So maybe, you know. Yeah.
Really expensive.
Well, that was the problem, I mean, if you're gonna have to build a million dollar bridge, unless the people live under the bridge, it's not a very affordable place to live, you know?
No.
You should talk to DCR, maybe they have some land for you.
They won't do it. Okay. Wait, no, then another one was, there's Afro Terrace, there's a bunch of people doing weird things like renting out their affordable units and stuff that we're trying to straighten out. I think there's two, and, and, one's renting and one's selling, and, and the one that's selling it affordable, uh, we're pursuing to make sure that it stays in affordable, like the deed stays.
So we have someone that's really staying on top of that, because that's what the consultant I thought was supposed to be.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, who's doing most of it.
Good, that's perfect.
I met some folks who unloaded on me about Afro Terrace.
Oh, you mean about the affordable part, or just in general?
Uh, people.
It's got its issues.
Renting, renting out and the quality of construction and all that stuff, and the noise and.
Is there flooding in the basements, just like, no, I'm just kidding.
Really?
No, I haven't heard of flooding in the basements, but, um, and then the other ones, I went to the, this is not a, a board, I went to the Holy Cross, uh, meeting that, education.
Did you take a shuttle bus there?
No, I parked right there, in the middle of everything. Well, actually, but there's a huge parking lot, I mean, it's, but it's okay on that one.
They have a lot of parking for themselves, yeah.
Yes.
They do.
So, he's, he is promising, okay, keep the promise.
Yeah, it was good, I didn't say.
There's, there's three good, three good classes, um, one of them was how to, well, I, I took, uh, uh, mediation, like how to, how to deal with problems and, and how to mediate the, the things that are going on. It was sort of just a, it was like four or five anecdotes, but it was okay.
Like a town moderator thing?
Yes, no, not at all, and, um, that was mediation, the first one was dealing with like conflict and stuff like that in the meetings, not, not at all what I was looking for. It was, it was like how to, how to hold the meeting for the village zoning, and sort of how to get that to stir the pot up until it's what people want, you know? I was more looking for one that was like when you're looking at one site plan, and the people next door don't want it, I was like, well, what do you do with those people, and that they weren't prepared to answer that one. And then the last one was, the last one was KP Law talking all about how to make sure that your, uh, decisions are defensible. And it was all about the, this thing that we were talking about with disclosing that you might not be able to vote, so there's only four votes, and if you need all four votes, make sure that it's what you want, or if you're not gonna attend. You, you have to make up the one session, you can only make up one session, and you have to read the minutes or whatever, videos or whatever there is.
Right.
It, it was all about that kind of, it was very interesting.
That's good.
You know?
So basically, they want them to review the decisions?
No, they didn't want that, well, it was mon- it was mainly about just making sure that your, your procedures were in place, so that they couldn't come back and appeal based on your procedures.
Right. Right, because you.
You know, make sure your notices were in, make sure everybody, um, they talked about the green stubs when you sent out your registered letters, they said, make sure you collect those, they said. Keep those, and, and they said, sometimes people in the meeting will sit there and match them up to the butters list, you know, I don't think we go that far in our meeting, that, that sitting there, but.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, that seems like a.
Good idea.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
You volunteering for that, Vinnie?
You know, about all that kind of stuff is what, uh, she was going over, I mean, votes, make sure you know the, how many people have to vote when you start, you know, so the people, you know, are aware, I mean, it's a good, good class though.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah, that's great.
That's awesome.
Vinnie, any other, uh, boards?
My board, we didn't have a quorum at the open space meeting.
Okay.
There you go, I saw him being invited, I saw him being invited to any of the other boards, so.
Which one, Transportation?
I can't, no, 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 it's the, um, oh, see, now, Community Preservation is the one that I was on.
Oh, yeah, Economic Development?
An economic development, yes. But maybe they haven't met, I don't know.
No, well, I missed the last meeting, but we have met.
She's on it, you're not on it anymore.
Voter. Oh, I, I got appointed as just a citizen.
Oh, alright.
Person at large.
Yeah.
Forward the invitations on just this.
Yeah, they.
Yes, I don't know when the next one was, because I missed the last meeting, but I'll find out.
So I think, you know, we did, uh, talked about, uh, it's a open meeting thing, uh, we do have two, uh, citizens petition.
For the town meeting?
For the town meeting.
Town meeting, so one of the ci- citizens petitions will be referred to the planning board for a zoning change.
Citizens position?
Citizens petition, ten tax, I'm sorry, ten taxpayer.
Yeah, for a zoning change, if you do that, do you not have to have a?
We need to hold a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we have to follow every.
If it passes a public meeting, a town meeting, then.
So what is it, it's a?
No, 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 no.
We have to hold a public hearing for it, before it can come to town meeting.
But how do we do that if it's a public petition?
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ten taxpayer petition, yes.
They submit it to the selectmen, the selectmen didn't have to refer it to us, once they refer it to us.
Oh, okay, so we find out about.
Our meeting is May, isn't it? When is our, our meeting is May, right?
Yeah, so we need to get.
Like, how are they gonna, yeah, I don't see how that.
That's a little close.
We have to.
For fourteen days.
How was it?
No, public hearing is fourteen days, we do have plenty of time.
Well, we should do it now, though.
Well, yeah, we should, yeah, okay.
Most probably next week it may be referred to the board for us.
That's unfortunate, because they don't have a meeting.
I'm just giving a heads up.
Right, but so then we won't see it until?
So let's say that's, that's April.
April, the last meeting in, no, the first meeting, April, April tenth.
First meeting in April.
April tenth.
We'll hear about it, and when, then we can post it for.
When's that one?
Not the very next one, it could, it can have to be the one after that.
When's our meeting in May?
Last town meeting.
When is your town meeting? The, it, it would have to be May eighth meeting, and we're already in that, that.
It's the third Monday.
Third Monday, the twenties?
Their public hearings get too long, so that, it's the.
Okay.
Roger's birthday?
That'd be interesting, because I guess this is a.
Yes. Oh, it's a, yes, I think that's right, it would be kind of good to have.
Well, they, they need to get that in sooner.
And, and, and I will, like, yeah. But I don't have to work late that day.
Yeah.
No.
I don't know, we may have to hold a special meet.
Oh, we might have to hold a special meet, oh, that's true, that's.
You know, they should, you know what you should do, tell whoever the petitioner is to come to our next meeting.
Who is the peti- no, it's not, it's nothing to, it's nothing to do the petitioner, there's things to do the town, it's the town's obligation, yeah, town's obligation.
I have no idea, you're the one who's talking about it. The zoning change.
Right, but the petitioner usually has to do the presentations.
In the town meeting.
No, we had a public hearing.
For the public.
Or in the public hearing, too.
Well, I mean, we don't know what they're talking about, somebody's gonna do a presentation.
Remember what hap- well, we were here when we did the, what was it, the parking, the commercial vehicle parking and.
Oh, that was wonderful.
Residential stuff?
Yeah.
We.
Yeah.
We didn't have control of what the issues were, because it was a petition from somebody else, so when that happens, it gets really confusing and really sad for us.
But it would be nice to talk to the petitioner before the public hearing, just so we can.
Yeah, they will.
See what, well, for us to know what they're talking about, and for them to know what they have to prepare.
No, we have the, we have the ten taxpayer petitions, just read it.
No, but we, but some.
Somebody has to contact us and tell us what's going on.
Well, somebody has to.
Right, and the selectmen will, and they will give us whatever the wording is, and then we advertise that.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, we can do that part, but, but when it comes to the public hearing, we don't know the argument or anything, we can just sit back and let them think about it.
Hopefully they'll attend, and we can have them come forward, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So, but, yeah, so it has to.
So, do we want to, well, we haven't had it referred to us yet, so we can't schedule the public hearing.
Maybe in next meeting, so I think.
No, but when you meet the petitioner, have them and talk to them about, here, we'll, we'll accept this and send it to the planning board.
No, and then, you know, town admin will take care of that, I'm not.
But just tell them to meet us.
Alright, is it possible to schedule the public hearing for our, whatever is the first meeting in May, and then whenever it gets here, we just post that?
Do you think it will go for one meeting or two meeting?
It's only gonna be one, that's, it's a public hearing, we close it, that's it, done.
They.
We close it? Whatever maybe they think, yeah.
We don't need additional information, we, we will then either, we'll hold a public hearing and make recommendations one way or the other after that.
Yeah, it has to be May eighth.
Right.
It has to be.
Unless we have a special, a special night, but.
But we can't just, we can't advertise something we don't tell people what it's about.
We can.
We're not gonna advertise it.
No, I think, you know, most probably, you know, most probably the warrants, maybe, they may be talking about the warrants next meeting, so I think, you know, that will be referred to that, that meeting, the board.
Are you gonna have the wording for the warrant?
Uh, that, we are copying the wording from the petition.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, we can put that in the notice then.
Do you think we can get it into the second one in April?
It's a public thing, you know, we did, it was open, last, last meeting we did talk about.
What in? Why would you do that rather than May eighth?
Oh, it is?
Um, just to give it order.
Okay, so we don't wanna, we don't wanna refer it before you send it to us?
No, no, before send it to us, I'm just giving.
Or less.
So that if something happens, we're not stuck to be the week before the town meeting?
Yeah.
If what happens?
If, I don't know, if something.
We have to hold up our special meeting.
We would have to hold a special meeting.
We can have an after graduation.
We could, yeah.
Your concern is that we open a public hearing.
After May eleventh, May ninth and May eleventh.
That's a simple majority, right, that's a simple majority, right?
It's a public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, it's nothing.
It's nothing, it's just a discussion, right?
And it doesn't matter what we say.
Yeah, all three will be there, you know, four will be there.
Oh, I think all you need is a quorum to have the meeting.
We can recommend four or against, doesn't really matter, it's just, they have to have a public hearing, so the public can hear what's going on in advance of the town meeting.
Right, right, so I need that one.
And have their opinion, I mean, it's constructive for the applicant, it's supposed to be.
Right, right.
So then town meeting votes on it, and if they go, yes, that means the zoning change has been approved by everybody?
That's the zoning change, that's, that's how zoning changes, yes.
But it, even in town meeting, zoning changes is super majority, or?
Oh, two thirds.
Two thirds, okay, so it's still a, a elevated requirement?
Zoning is always, that's why, you know, the government is proposing.
We have to change it for government, for Charlie, we have to change it for Charlie.
We done with that?
We have to change it for Charlie, right?
We have to change it for Charlie.
So we're not tentatively scheduling anything?
No, no, no.
No, not yet.
Because there's nothing to schedule.
No.
Radio's happening, but, that's the problem.
We just, we just know there's not.
If we got something on Wednesday, after the selectmen's meeting next week, what's the soonest we could hold a public hearing?
Right, so do you think that we should at least put in the minutes, so it's all legal, that we're tentatively scheduling a public hearing for either April twenty fourth or May, well, it'd be in the minutes, so at least then we can start it, can't we?
Can you do that?
If it's already in here or not?
Well, we're discussing it, so it should be in the minutes, so there's a ten taxpayer petition, which we haven't received.
Yeah. So we don't have to wait for the next meeting to do it?
Right, so we can do it, right, that's what I'm.
So we can, if we get it.
Oh, so what you're saying is if we start it now, then if the board of selectmen send it to us next week, you can post it?
So we're saying, if it's received.
Most probably next one.
And then I put it in the paper, yeah.
You wanna do that?
Yes.
Let's do that.
Yes, so, good job, but you said Wednesday meeting, the third?
Awesome.
Next Wednesday, alternate Wednesdays, one is select board and one is planning, I mean.
You're just like that.
I know, sorry, um.
Next week, same time, once this.
So that's, I believe if, if you get it.
Same time. Well, don't worry, Raj won't be on the board, either board next week in a couple weeks.
If it is, I think, I have to Friday to get it, it's a stop. I think if you get it, if you have it on the third, get it to me, email it me that night or Thursday morning, because I think I can put it in Friday for a Wednesday posting.
Right, that makes sense.
So that would, the latest I could have it is the fifth, put it on the twenty fourth.
So we can.
Still squeeze it in.
If you get it by the fifth, you can go for the twenty fourth, if not, we'll.
Maybe, makes sense.
So we're going to, we are tentatively scheduling a meeting, a public meeting for April twenty fourth or May, what do they say, eight?
Or May eighth, yep.
Eighth, so it's in the minutes, so that now if anyone says, well, you just took it with, without the authorization.
Okay. We done?
Yeah.
I think so.
Let's move on, um, we have, uh.
Nice, because that's fun.
What's that, Ken?
No, invoices, okay, we have, uh, legal fees for the cross, fifty seven, we don't, we can't use our.
No, minutes.
Nope. Can't use a stamp.
Can't use our stamps on these.
Original.
Shrine of, four hundred dollars. We have Weston Circle, one twenty eight.
Fifty seven dollars.
From town council, that's amazing, huh? That's great.
How many minutes, look at that?
Right, okay, like fifteen?
We have, um, RJF thirteen hundred thirty six dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's the first one.
Oh, that's the two lots, the two lots that we did the site plan review on.
Right.
Yep, and, uh, Girl Scouts, sixty eight dollars.
Really? He's supposed to be monitoring construction on that job.
See what it hand on the cookies.
Ah ha.
That's what I was gonna say, but I wouldn't for Mark to say it. Site plan, site plan review.
Yeah, but we gotta make sure there's construction inspection going on.
Does it have a wall?
Yeah, the wall fell, fell down, so they need.
The wall fell down, Mark.
No, we should get Trump involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll want a billion.
Is this a steel wall or concrete wall?
He'll want a billion dollars for it.
Modern rock, I think, so.
We'll get Worcester to pay for it.
They're gonna pay.
Okay.
What's this, contact the planning board one, it's a lot of jibber jamber, but I can't get to the point.
They use.
Well, that was that woman, that was.
It's New House Circle.
With the trees and the.
Trees and the.
Well, that's this one?
Trees in the basement.
Those seven new, okay, alright.
We already talked about that.
People from the bottom, from the bottom.
All done, just out of the.
Did you fall asleep?
There you go.
Okay, minutes? Did everybody review the minutes from March thirteenth?
I did, I did review them, they looked good, I really did.
Any discussion of the minutes or changes?
Was I there?
There you go.
Yes, you were.
Yep.
Wow, it's only a page!
I know.
All right, I moved to approve the meeting minutes from March thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
As submitted?
As submitted, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Have you discussed it?
No, discussed it?
We discussed.
I was disgusted, I was disgusted.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Nobody wrote it.
A board member has requested discussion.
Oh, well, it's discussed.
Wait, which word?
They were, they were beautifully typed, no, that's.
They were beautiful, I liked the one page.
Motion was made in second, all in favor?
I.
Still I.
Okay, now, I'm expecting, I'm expecting a motion to adjourn, but before we do that, we want to discuss it, so, I'll input a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I, I, I will second it.
Second it, any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering what time is a, should we do it on the quarter hours, on the, on the minute, when?
I think we need to watch the second hand.
Yes, exactly, maybe the sweep second hand, and only adjourn or leave on the twelve. Any more discussion?
I hope not.
All in favor?
Wait, no, I don't actually want to do the twelve thing. I really just want to adjourn.
All right, so I have a, I have a procedural question, and it is that, so.
You should have asked them, yeah.
In our, in our municipal governance meetings, right?